It was Iyer who disrupted. It was Iyer who disrupted.
So we're calling the meeting to order at 7:01. Good evening and welcome to the February 21st meeting of the Ann Arbor City Council. Mayor Taylor asked me to express his apologies for being absent this evening as he is home recovering from his first bout with COVID. He is doing well and, but still is within the time period to quarantine to avoid spread. So we all wish him a speedy recovery and hope that he will return to us soon. Now, if you are able, I will ask that we please rise and join for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, I will ask that we dedicate our moment of silence to our friends and neighbors in East Lansing and to the students, faculty, and staff, and all those impacted by the unconscionable tragedy at Michigan State University, especially Ariel Anderson, Alexandria Werner, Brian Frazier, and those who were injured. Will the clerk please call the role of counsel?
Counselor Member Dish?
Present.
Counselor Member Harrison?
Present.
Counselor Member Song?
Absent.
Counselor Member Watson?
Present.
Mayor Protam Radina?
Present.
Counselor Member Gazi Edwin?
Present.
Mayor Taylor?
Absent.
Counselor Member Iyer?
Here.
Counselor Member Ackman?
Here.
Counselor Member Briggs?
Absent.
Counselor Member Cornell?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Counselor Member Iyer, seconded by Counselor Member Ackman. Any discussion of the agenda? All those in favor? Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Communications from our city attorney. Do we have any communications, Mr. City Attorney?
None tonight, thank you.
Oh, sorry, city administrator.
No, me either.
Thank you. Seeing no introductions tonight, we will move into public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to council and the community about matters of municipal interest. To speak at public comment, one must have signed up in advance by contacting our city clerk. Speakers have three minutes to speak and we can only have one person speaking at a time. For those speaking via Zoom, the city clerk will notify you when you have 30 seconds remaining and when your time has expired. Speakers are not authorized to delegate their time to an alternative speaker. And we do have 12 public commenters this evening, and so for the first time, we will have some expanded public comment at the beginning of our meeting. Our first speaker this evening is Celeste Camparola.
Good evening, everyone. This is Celeste Camparola, the Michigan chapter lead of Common Sense Action, and I am here tonight over the phone to support, to support Counselor Member and Mayor Protam Radina's resolution to support common sense gun safety measures. And he and I were kind of talking about, you know, what does common sense mean? Because we understand it, it means different things for different people. And let me just say that what we are asking for and what is being introduced in our state senate right now, soon to hopefully be introduced in the House, are safe gun safety bills that are supported by the majority of Americans that will keep us safe. Things like secure gun storage, things like red flag laws, and things like, sorry, safe storage, red flag law, and, oh my gosh, background checks on all gun sales. Hello. So this is going to be having a hearing in Lansing on Thursday, and many of us, Common Sense Action and other gun violence prevention organization supporters will be there to hear the Senate as they propose these bills. And so we just really appreciate the work of this city and know that there are things that can be done at the local level, like doing a resolution, like Counselor Member Radina is introducing. So just here in support and thanking all of you for the work that you are doing. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Scott Roberts.
Roberts, I'm an attorney. I was a vendor at the street fair last year, and I'm here to speak in support of granting the street fair permit. I think it's important to remember the history of the street fair. The street fair started about 20 years ago to address a very real issue, and that issue was the lack of infrastructure at the hash bash. Specifically, restrooms, the ability to wash your hands, cleaning up afterwards, subsidizing the police and fire response, as well as just, you know, kind of generally cleaning up at the end, because they clean it up every single year. And that is something that, you know, I think the hash bash needs. The hash bash is going to happen regardless of the street fair happens. The hash bash and the street fair, in most people's minds, there's no distinction. It is one and the same. You take away the street fair, those 10,000, 15,000 people are still going to show up to the hash bash. Then the question becomes, if they're at the hash bash, they got to use the bathroom, where are they going to go? And the answer is two, both. One, they go to the local restaurants and they cause a nuisance, and we know because there was a lot of complaints before the street fair about that. Or number two, I mean, they use the city as a sewer, and they go wherever it is convenient for them. And I don't think that's good for anyone involved. I do want to also address the public safety concern, because that was brought by the police and it was brought by fire, and I believe it's unfounded. I believe not having the street fair is actually going to cause public safety concerns, because you have 10,000, 15,000, 20,000 highly intoxicated 20-somethings. And if we don't close off those streets, I'd rather have them in the streets without cars than in a street with cars, because these people are not, you know, sober, and they may not make great decisions. And I think it would be a lot better for everyone if we did close off those streets. So what I'm saying is, if you deny the, the street fair permit, I believe it's going to cause the very issues that the city and fire are saying are going to happen if you actually grant it. It's going to cause public safety concerns, it's going to cause nuisances to nearby residents, it's going to cause a big mess that the street fair isn't going to be around to clean up this year. And, you know, it's bad for the community. I mean, it's something where people are going to need these services, and they're going to go to hash bash. So then the question for you is, are you going to allow them to have it, or are you going to deny the permit and people won't have a place to go to the bathroom, wash their hands? And so for those reasons, I'd suggest you grant the permit.
Hello. So the people of the cannabis culture, community, whether it's medical or recreational, have spent and lost too much time in their homes hiding, in a car behind a building. There isn't many events besides the hash bash over the years leading up to legalization. This is one of the places where it's like a family reunion. We all meet family, friends, we talk about what's going on in the community, what are we going to do for the next year, and how are we going to structure the legalization, the recreational, and the medical altogether to come together. A lot of the cannabis money that's given to the state of Michigan and to Ann Arbor is from these stores. These stores are going to be on the Monroe Street Fair. They're the ones there supporting and giving them, the people, the community, education, the knowledge. I come from a place where I had a family member hurt in a car accident, filled him with drugs from the hospital. If it wasn't for cannabis, this person wouldn't walk. So we need to be able to have a place where we can all meet and rejoice and, shoot, have a place to get together. Ann Arbor has always been the structured place. I've been here for 40 years. This has been the place. Whether there's a permit or not, like this gentleman said, the people are coming, and there's nowhere for them to use the bathroom. Simple things that have to happen, except for on the Monroe Street Fair. And boy, I've been there every year. The crew comes out, cleans up everything, and it's in perfect condition. I, over the years, have never seen where the police had more than good interaction with people at both events, which really truly is the same people walking from one to the other. The police are very friendly and really don't have anything to do besides watch all of us. So I don't believe the conflict of this football game in April in the mud is going to be a conflict with this, this problem that we're having here. It should be a no, a no-brainer that Ann Arbor was the one. They're known for the hash bash around the world, people come from around the world, famous people, and the medically ill that have somewhere to go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Lenny Sinclair.
Everybody heard of the thing about if you don't remember the past, you're bound to repeat it. And I would like to explain a little bit about what happened to us about 50 years ago in Ann Arbor and in the Ann Arbor City Council. When my husband, my ex-husband John Sinclair got out of jail after two and a half years, he started back where he left off before he went to jail, and that's promoting music, managing bands, and he organized the 1972 and the 1973 Blues and Jazz Festivals in Ann Arbor, which were great success and set the standard for festivals all in the country in terms of booking. And comes 1974, the composition of the city council changed, and there were people in the city council who denied us the permit to have the next festival in Detroit, which was devastating, because we had already contracted for the musicians to appear and had invested a lot of money. At the last minute, Windsor, University of Windsor, allowed us to have the festival in Windsor, which was a great disaster, and led, led to us having to declare bankruptcy and having to move out of Ann Arbor and move to Detroit. That was in 1972, 51 years ago. So I just want to say, there, please, city council, don't cancel this culture on us. That is our culture. We've been fighting for it, and now it's legal. And now you want to cancel it? No, please don't. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Victoria Green.
Hi, folks. First of all, best wishes for better health for some of your colleagues who aren't able to be here this evening. I'm here, though, because of the East Medical Center Bridge. I've ridden over the East Medical Center Bridge for decades now to get to my job, to get to meetings on North Campus, to get to the pool when my kids were smaller, to get to robotics practice, and yes, to get to the Songbird Cafe to meet with city council candidates. I ride my bike across that bridge, but nobody else I know does. I don't know if any of you all have ever ridden your bikes across that bridge, but it's not good. I don't blame anyone who doesn't do it today, because it wasn't built for people like me to ride a bike across it. It was built by your long-ago colleagues for people to drive in cars and buses across it. And so, of course, that's what people do today, because the decision they made 40 years ago that we were going to ride in vehicles across that bridge has haunted us for 40 years. And I say haunted, because I do ride my bike across it. And it's not safe today. It's not safe to cross across the lanes, it's not safe to ride in the lanes of 35 mile per hour traffic. But I've never come and complained to any of you about that, because I know that we can really only afford to rebuild bridges at end of life. End of life, like Broadway and Stadium once were, where when we rebuilt them, we made sure they met multimodal needs. So I, you know, sucked it up, told my family I'd be careful, not to worry, that I would come home at the end of the day and gone out day after day over that bridge. And now, the bridge is at end of life, and so you all get to rebuild it. And now is the time. Now is your time to make a change. It's the time to make that choke point welcoming for cyclists, especially those who, unlike me, are too intimidated today to ride across it. Perhaps some of you feel that way. It's 12 minutes to North Campus. Not one of my U of M colleagues that I know of has ever ridden their bike to North Campus, besides me. I'm sure there are some, they're just not common, at least in the offices I've worked in. I know that fixing this bridge won't fix the whole route, but you can't fix the whole route today. But this is your only chance to fix this choke point, because now is the time, and it's the only chance in what's left of my lifetime. So I'm frustrated to hear that the plan for it is no dedicated cycling infrastructure. Let me repeat that. No cycling infrastructure. The current plan is for cyclists like me to ride in the road, or to dismount in the center of the road with the traffic around us and haul our bikes up onto that sidewalk, a sidewalk where there is no room for us, even as guests under our policy, because the pedestrian traffic is so heavy. There's no way that the new e-bikes that I'm sure you all are excited to hear maybe coming to Ann Arbor can safely ride in that sort of traffic of the sidewalk today without endangering the pedestrians. I hope that means I have 30 seconds left.
Just not.
Okay, I have old closure, it was really great. Thank you, everyone. See ya.
Thank you. Next up, we have Adam Santafanti.
Hi, my name's Adam Santafani. I'm also here to support the Monroe Street Fair. As someone who's been coming to the hash bash since the early days before the fair, I remember what it was like back then, and, you know, having to beg to use a bathroom or beg to get a drink of water. So frankly, I feel that it really, since the Monroe Street Fair has been there, it's added, and it's made things safer. It, it gives the, the people that are going to come anyway somewhere to congregate afterwards, rather than they're out bothering businesses. You know, it gives people, again, it, it's a really positive environment, as well as, you know, stepping up, and it gives some of the businesses that are, you know, in the cannabis field, a, a way to advertise, a way, and again, it's, it's just a good scene. It's a tradition now. The street fair's been going on for 23 years. It just seems silly to stop something when we all know it's not a problem. And to not have the street fair is going to create issues that I don't think the city needs. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mohajgan Savabiyasfani.
Hello, Ann Arbor. Wow, we have lots of people really dedicated to cannabis. My vote is cancel this ugly orgy. This town does not need cannabis orgy, cancel it. It's a source of embarrassment. But there is other things that are sources of embarrassment for people in Ann Arbor, and that is that our city council has, for a very long time, while pretending to be anti-violence, they have been allowing murder of Palestinian people in the hands of a racist apartheid state that is Israel. I have come here for 20 years, and I will continue to come, because it is an embarrassment to this community, to this town, when every human rights organization in the world has declared Israel to be a violent apartheid state. This city council continues to refuse to listen to the thousands who have been coming here since 1980s, to say at the very least, pass the resolution, that we are against military aid to Israel. This city council wants you to believe they are against violence. Once you believe they are against gun violence. We have come here all these years with gun violence across the United States, happening almost every day, and we have said, if you are against gun violence inside the United States, you should be against gun violence outside the United States, especially when the United States funds it. The United States gives Israel $4 billion a year, and guess where, where that money goes? To the slaughter of Palestinian people, particularly children. This poster depicts Ms. Iyer, who received support from friends of Israeli Defense Forces, and now she makes faces at me, and she refuses to hand out this poster, which I handed out, and she says, "We don't want your racist cartoon." This cartoon is not racist, it's depicting racists in Ann Arbor, which is Ms. Iyer, along with everyone else here, who refuses to take one step to protect Palestinian people from the violence that the United States, with your tax dollar, is unleashing on them day in and day out. If you think police violence in America is bad, if you think mass murder on the scale that you see in the United States, which is large and very, very sad, is bad, think about what $4 billion a year buys Israeli racist government in terms of killing Palestinian people. Pass the resolution, we are against military aid to Israel, or be called racist bastards.
Your time has expired. Next, next, we have Larry Deck.
I'm Larry Deck, speaking regarding the East Medical Bridge. You've heard me before, and you may recall from our previous communications, speaking on behalf of Bike Washington, that we'd like to see two things on the bridge. Widening the west sidewalk to about 15 feet to make room for bidirectional bike lanes and a pedestrian lane, which would also serve as part of a campus-to-campus bikeway, and building the planned trail loop under the bridge, which would also be a part of that bikeway. We think it should be straightforward to resolve MDOT's concerns about that. Now, the proposal before you, as I understand it, would call for restoring some of the, some or all of the sidewalk space that was taken away in the earlier plan. I have some questions about that, and I'm not sure what the answers are. The, is most of the cost of that due to the, an added beam needed, being needed underneath and abutment support for that? And if so, how many feet of added sidewalk space could we get for an added beam? If I understand the engineering drawings correctly, both about our current bridge and the planned future bridge, the current beams are about just under six feet apart, five feet, 11 inches, and a little bit more. If that's the case, then we could get approximately six feet of additional sidewalk space by adding a beam. So it'd be good, if this is true, it'd be good to verify that, both council and staff, to find out if that's true, and that may open an opportunity to widen that west sidewalk. As you know, the city and university have carbon neutrality plans. The university's plan calls for a bikeway between North Campus and Central Campus. This facility could serve as a part of that bikeway. Ann Arbor's A20 plan calls for a reduction of vehicle miles traveled by 2030 of 50% in Ann Arbor, and a 25%, 25% of trips by walking and biking in Ann Arbor by 2030. Now, whether or not you think these goals are achievable, at least it would be good towards these goals. This bridge gives us an opportunity to make progress towards these goals, and an opportunity in one of the parts of town with some of the heaviest bicycle and pedestrian traffic. This bridge is a major long-term investment. It's important, we think, to do it right and not to make a $10 million mistake. Thanks.
Thank you. Blaine Coleman.
All right, you already know that Ann Arbor City Council Member Aisha Gazi Edwin has been praising the Ann Arbor Human Rights Commission to the skies. What you may not know is that same Ann Arbor Human Rights Commission was pushing for virtually the same resolution that we've been pushing for all these years, to speak against military aid to Israel. The Ann Arbor Human Rights Commission was pushing for that in 2003 at the city council, and the city council fiercely, fiercely turned a cold shoulder to them, took away their staff, flushed out their director, and to this day, it's still not the same Human Rights Commission. Everyone and everything that you respect, you end up ditching, you end up ditching if they support Palestinian human rights. Exhibit A, Mayor Protam Travis Radina was praising former Ann Arbor City Council Member Kathy Kozachenko, the first LGBTQ open and out member of the Ann Arbor City Council. She was that and much, much more. She pushed like crazy for Palestinian rights. And as soon, as soon as Radina found out about that, you stopped hearing her name past his lips ever again. You stopped seeing any tweets from him about Council Member Kozachenko ever again. When an institution or a person supports Palestinian human rights, you ditch them like a hot potato. And for over 20 years, this whole Ann Arbor City Council has devoted enormous amounts of time and effort to making sure no Palestinian rights resolution would ever be debated by the city council. Is that anything other than racism? Is there some other name you would use for that other than racism? And that's setting aside the fact, which you can't set aside, that Israel was for years an intimate, close ally of apartheid South Africa, because they were the same. None of that has moved you, none of that. You have exerted so much effort to make sure that there's no debate of this simple seven-word resolution. We are against military aid to Israel. While Israel keeps gunning down Palestinians, Israel keeps bombing Palestinians down to the ground, and it has effects that are felt right here, even in Ann Arbor. You cannot find a Palestinian who isn't terrified to publicly bring up the You cannot find a Palestinian who isn't terrified to publicly bring up the subject of Palestinian rights. It's because of you. You cannot find an Arab-American or a Muslim-American, in Ann Arbor even, who's not afraid to bring up the subject of Palestinian rights. They are terrified because of you, you racist bastard city council.
Your time has expired.
I said, "You racist bastard."
Your time has expired.
Stop talking over me.
Racist bastard.
Your time has expired. Gordon Bigelow. We won't have any further disruptions.
My immediate family has taken five degrees from the University of Michigan, so we're familiar with the surroundings. When my wife and I were married here in 1953, do the math, we went to Hawaii to raise our family. And when we retired from Hawaii in 1993, 30 years ago, we thought about California and Oregon as places to retire, but we came to Ann Arbor. We found that we had been spending our off time in the summers trading houses with people in Ann Arbor, and they loved to trade houses with somebody who lived in Honolulu. So we settled in Ann Arbor 30 years ago, and we bought a house on the west side, and we have really enjoyed living here. But in the recent years, we have had some misgivings about that, and I'd just like to raise a couple of issues. Our quality of life seems to have been declining here, and one of the reasons we found was that there is traffic congestion now, there are more potholes as a result, there are high-rises going up, and there are vintage houses and vintage trees coming down to accommodate them. We find that the city council is really instrumental in this because they're offering gift, well, gift offerings of numerous sorts, but mainly of rezoning properties so that they can be developed upon. And in the long run, we have a feeling that the city council is really instrumental in this. We have read recently in the New Yorker magazine that the city of Austin in Texas has made its city council into an instrument of profit-making for developers and contractors. And I don't like to see that our city council apparently is making itself such an instrument. But this is not Texas. This is Michigan. This is Ann Arbor. But we have a feeling that the majority on the... Have I gone three minutes?
You have. Next, we have Adam Goodman.
Hi, David. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. So, to start off, I found it interesting that at the last meeting, former council member Griswold spoke at public comment, among other things, expressing concern that reworking the plans for East Medical Center Drive Bridge to include adequate pedestrian and bike accommodations might add $2 million to the project cost. And, you know, in some ways, I find this concerning too, but let's take a moment and consider why this is and how we got here. Nearly half of the estimated cost, not counting the contingency fund, is for a rework of the engineering plans that were completed over the last year. This means that had the previous council, including Councilmember Griswold, as well as a few of you, actually chosen to aggressively pursue a design that adequately accommodated all transportation modes, much of this additional cost could have been avoided. Or to put it another way, if we had had the current membership of city council a year ago, it might have saved the city and the university hundreds of thousands of dollars and a year of delay on this project. Better enough with hypotheticals. Main point is, we should not fall prey to the sunk cost fallacy here. We will, as previous commentary said, have to live with this bridge for generations. So it's important, and it is worth paying the cost to get it as right to the greatest extent we possibly can. So I do want to offer sincere thanks to some of the folks on council and to Mr. DeHoney for this time, standing up for the stated values of the city and getting us this far. Speaking before you in December, I characterized the previous bridge design as a capitulation. Now, at least, we can say it's a compromise. But it really is just that: a compromise. We are compromising our city's goals and values by allowing a roadway to be widened, which will increase traffic volumes, speeds, and potential conflicts when we have adopted plans and objectives to do the opposite. We have objectives to reduce fatalities and serious injuries to zero and to cut our city's total vehicle miles traveled in half. We cannot do this. We cannot achieve any of this if we're going to keep on widening roads. So, in case you can't tell, I'm not exactly happy with the plan that's before you tonight. But I also recognize that, you know, this might be it, right? So my ask for you is, first, please continue to keep careful eye on transportation needs in the wider vicinity of this bridge, in the Fuller East Medical Center intersection. It's a critical lynchpin in multiple biking and walking routes through the city. There's a redesign of this intersection potentially coming down the road, so to speak, one which could be even more disastrous for these safety and sustainability goals if we do it wrong. And meanwhile, progress has not been made on long-planned pedestrian and bike underpass connections here for 40 years now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kirk Westfall.
What you're deliberating tonight has been characterized as a bridge project, but at its core, it is a road widening. Widening a road, whether or not it adds lanes, increases the speed of the road. Faster driving means exponentially more human injuries. And of course, inviting more injuries contradicts your Vision Zero commitment to zero deaths and serious injuries by 2025. The discussion highlights three things that should be worrisome to anyone concerned about road safety. One, you're debating among choices that will increase car speeds. Two, these choices made their way through staff to your packet in the first place. And three, this is just the latest in a series of examples of how your Vision Zero commitment is somehow not being communicated to or carried out by staff. Recent examples include the Lower Town Mobility Study, a tremendously expensive study that, despite referencing Vision Zero and carbon neutrality, was described by staff as addressing car congestion and was largely car-focused. Platt Road, the plan to resurface Platt was going to leave it as a dangerous four-lane road. Thankfully, you directed staff to correct this. Huron Parkway, staff recommended and you approved the resurfacing of Huron Parkway that also keeps it four lanes, maintaining highway speeds through a high school crosswalk where children have been injured. Just like with Platt, please direct staff to correct this. The Fuller and Maiden intersection. Designs were circulated last year that showed adding turn lanes and slip lanes. How is it that any staff or consultant resources are being used for this? A Vision Zero approach might start by questioning why Fuller Road has four dedicated car lanes in the first place, not how to widen it. And now the bridge. So we see a pattern. Why does this keep happening? Why wasn't staff's first instinct to remove lanes on this bridge or add cycling infrastructure? The traffic volume on the bridge is about half of that of South Main Street, where we removed lanes and saw dramatically reduced speeding. Was it U of M's money? Is any amount of money worth endangering everyone using a road or its sidewalks? What if U of M offered $5 million for a redesign of Fuller and Maiden Lane so they can ram through thousands more cars with their new parking structure? Despite what U of M wants, the car's first mentality in City Hall needs to end now so we can move forward. My request tonight with the bridge specifically is for you to direct staff to create a new design that removes the car lanes and increases the bike and pedestrian infrastructure. In the broader picture, I ask four things. One, reaffirm your commitment to literally zero deaths and serious injuries by 2025, not fewer deaths and injuries than most of Michigan. Two, direct staff to do road diets by default, so proposals like this never come before you again. Three, remove regressive policies like the so-called neighborhood feedback veto process for sidewalks, traffic calming, and removing parking. And four, institute other Vision Zero-friendly policies like a roundabout first policy and prohibiting the use of car level of service and staff analysis. You're going to spend about $1 billion over the next two years. Please follow the lead of many cities in the U.S.
Thank you.
With a zero commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any other public comment, we come to communications from council. Are there communications? Councilmember Cornell.
That will be brief. I want to thank everyone who came out to my coffee hour with Councilmember Briggs this past Sunday. As always, your feedback is really important and valuable to us. Our next coffee hour will be on March 19 at the Pretzel Bell. Do not be alarmed that the restaurant is not open that day. However, we're being allowed to use their space because we've had capacity issues at our last two spaces, which is wonderful. And the only other thing that I wanted to mention is that the A202023 Sustainability Forum series continues on Thursday, February 23, 6 to 8 p.m. This is a hybrid event. You can find more information on their website, but the topic of it is on housing and transportation, what's the climate connection? So I encourage you to look into that as a chance to hear from experts in our region.
Thank you. Councilmember Ghazi Edwin.
Thank you. I want to just address some misinformation that was cited here tonight. I joined the Human Rights Commission in 2019, and since that date, that resolution banning military aid to Israel has not come to us. And I do believe that the way that you all act and these cartoonish depictions are anti-Semitic, and they're wrong, and it's a damaging organizing method. You've been affiliated with groups that have protested outside of religious institutions, and I believe that your methods try to equate the actions of an entire, of a political government, the Israeli government, with a religious group and with an ethnic identity. And that's just as damaging as Islamophobia or any other type of racism. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dish.
Thank you, Councilmember Ghazi Edwin. I wanted to...
Can you please leave the podium? Thank you.
I just...
We're gonna ask you to leave the meeting. You've been warned multiple times to not disrupt this proceeding, and since you're now stealing time from everyone else, we're gonna ask you to leave. We can have you escorted out of the meeting. You've repeatedly disrupted the meeting in violation of council rules. You've been warned repeatedly. I'm gonna ask you to please leave the meeting. Councilmember Dish.
Thank you. I wanted to second Councilmember Cornell's commendation of the Housing and Transportation, What's the Climate Connection event, but I wanted to mention that it's actually tomorrow, February 22. It can be, you can go at, you can attend in person at AADL, the Ann Arbor District Library, or you can attend online, but you need to register in advance, and you can do this on the A20 website.
Thank you. Councilmember Watson.
I wanted to invite Ward 2 residents to my coffee hour, my coming coffee hour, which will be Sunday, March 5 at 3 p.m. at Sweet Waters on Plymouth and Green. And I also wanted to draw Ward 2 residents' attention to a public hearing on the proposed University of Michigan Credit Union site on Plymouth Road and Prairie, and that will be Thursday, the 23rd, at 7 p.m. The link to that can be found on the city calendar on the city website. And that's a virtual meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ackman.
I also wanted to thank residents that showed up to my constituent hour this past Sunday at Union Rec and wanted to remind people that I have constituent hours every third Sunday of the month, and I announce the specific time and location both on my website and on Facebook, so you can check in there to find out what my future plans are. I also wanted to draw attention to the Allmendinger Park Playground Project meeting. The park is scheduled for improvements, and staff is holding a Zoom meeting on March 7 from 7 to 8 to discuss the design and for you to provide input. Again, this is on Zoom. I'm happy to share the link with you if you reach out. It's also on my website. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to draw everyone's attention to a resolution for consideration at your next meeting to appoint Brooks Curtis to the Environmental Commission. Next, I would like to request confirmation of the following appointments that were presented to city council for consideration at our February 6, 2023 regular session: to the Elizabeth Dean Fund Committee, Brooks Curtis, and to the Local Officers Compensation Committee, Diane Height. May I have a motion? Councilmember Dish? Councilmember Cornell seconds. All those in favor? Any opposed? They are approved. We now come to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Is there any discussion of the consent agenda? Councilmember Ackman?
I'll see what's in second.
Is there any other discussion of the consent agenda? All those in favor of the consent agenda excluding CA 1, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved with eight council members present, all voting in the affirmative, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement for CA 4, CA 10, and CA 11. CA 1, the resolution to approve the closing of Monroe and Tappan Streets for the annual Monroe Street Fair, Saturday, April 1, 2023.
Mr. Mayor.
Moved by, you want me to move it first?
Okay.
Moved by. Councilmember Ackman, seconded by Councilmember Ayer. For discussion. Mr. DeHoney.
Thank you. We have both chiefs here this evening to address the item. We have an introduction. We do have some questions that were posed, but I also want to give both chiefs the opportunity to express their perspective on this item. So, chiefs.
Good evening, everybody, and gentlemen, council. Appreciate the opportunity this evening. I wanted to address some of the concern that had been, or some of the concerns that has been raised with these events. This is based on our experience. This is something that we feel there's an obligation as the public safety officials for the city to be bringing this forward. What we want to avoid is, and after the fact of you were aware of concerns, those concerns weren't voiced, and then there's criticisms of police or fire for response times and our ability to respond, and that's principally our concern. It's not so much the matter of staff, it's the ability to deploy staff. Last year, we ran into the same alignment of the three events with the Spring Game, Hash Bash, and Monroe Street Fair. We had concerns going into it, and those concerns were realized. Speaking for fire alone, we had four incidents specific to this event, and our units from the downtown station, their turnaround time was over an hour for each of these events, which is normally a half-hour call tops, being on scene. So the principal concern is our ability to get staff in and then staff out, and we struggled with just singular medical events, which are to be expected for any crowd of this size. If there should be something that is of more significant magnitude, either a fire incident, EMS incident, where we need to get numerous resources in, we would absolutely be struggled with that. Excuse me, that would be an absolute struggle, and there would be rightful criticism of our agencies for that. The other concern, too, is this is something that is a very real issue that we deal with on game days, is our ability to get units from Michigan Stadium to the hospital has to go through a downtown network that is less than ideal, and that is a struggle that we deal with with every fall for home games. We've had repeated conversations with U of M Public Safety, HVA, that's a known factor. We have some contingent... We have some contingencies for that, but at least on the football games, we don't then have this block in between the hospital and the stadium. And this event is pretty much right in that area of the strategic pathway. And I'll let Chief Metzer.
Yeah, most of my comments echo what Chief Kennedy has said, and I also want to thank the people that have come to speak about this because I've been a police officer here for almost 25 years. I understand the history of this event. I've worked many of these Hash Bash events as a much younger officer, and I definitely appreciate the camaraderie that we have with a lot of the people that attend these. It's never the mass, it's a few bad actors. But what I can say is this is the one event that we do have some control over in this city with in terms of granting a permit. And so when our track when we get gridlocked downtown, as Chief Kennedy stated, it is nearly impossible to get in, should we have a large-scale event, or get out, should we have one in another area of the city that we can't get to with enough staffing? So it's we are not asking for this to this event to be canceled indefinitely. We have we are absolutely willing to entertain other options for a venue on the same day. It's just that when everything is congested in one area, we have significant issues.
Thank you. Are there discussion is there discussion or are there any comments or questions? Sorry. Councilmember Cornell.
Would if allowed to use the campus area or a place on campus for this type of event, would that alleviate your concerns, or are you looking for someplace removed from downtown? Just for clarification for the group.
Yeah, I think moving out of the immediate downtown area would be our preference, even if it were just a bit outside, and we have mentioned West Park as an alternative if possible. It's close, so that it's walking distance, but it also frees up some of the congestion. It would give way to more pedestrian traffic, which is manageable, but it would maybe decrease the congestion in that specific area.
Thank you. I have one more question. When earlier when the organizers mentioned that they were able to subsidize police presence, I'm not sure if they're talking about off-duty police officers who, you know, sort of serve as security, but is there is the is the fact I guess what I'm hearing, I want to clarify, is that it's the density of people in that location and sort of vehicle response. It's not that you don't have staffing.
Yeah, I mean, so we'd never know how many people the Spring Game's going to bring in, if it's going to bring in 50,000 or 70,000. And so staffing is always a concern, and whether or not we've planned appropriately for that, and we do work with the University of Michigan on staffing to ensure that we bring in appropriate resources, whether it's the state police. But if we have 50 officers outside the event that need to get in, or we have 10 officers in the event that need to get out for some reason, that's the concern.
Councilmember Ackman.
I was wondering if you could speak to some of the things that were raised by our public commenters, such as, you know, a history of there being problems before this fair was introduced and this providing needed bathrooms, needed places for people to kind of spend time sobering up, et cetera, et cetera. Can you respond to any of that?
Anecdotal.
Yeah, I didn't really come prepared with that. We wanted to speak to the this creates citywide draw for services. Our principal concern, though, is the congestion in the downtown core. So I would say that there might have been a bit of a trade-off because there's a tremendous amount of other associated activities that have that happen around the city well before and after that draw resources, but because of those are more dispersed, we're able to handle those with better system capacity. It's just this concentration that's the concern.
Chief Kennedy, I noticed that you you said that if this is approved, you requested that the street fair be responsible for contracting for one more transport unit along with one utility Gator transport and paying for the overtime staffing of one fire department engine company. And that's an interesting request, but it doesn't sound like it actually addresses the problem.
It doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah, my the recommendation is that this really creates issues for us, and that was a I guess that was a fallback, if you will.
Yeah, I get it. Okay.
It does your spot on that does not alleviate the concern.
So then, may I ask both of you or either of you, have you floated the West Park alternative venue idea with the organizers of the event?
So I can say we've had a couple of meetings with council. We have not spoken directly to any event organizers. We have passed along some alternative locations through council.
Does anyone know on council if there was a response? Okay.
Yes, they did confirm that they understood the options available to them and the strong desire for public safety to have them not congregate where they have previously, and that they were having discussions about alternative locations, but really have their hearts set on this one at this moment.
You know, I think that much of what has already been discussed were questions that I wanted to ask, but I think primarily I just want us to be clear. When I talk to both of you, Chief Kennedy and Chief Metzer, your primary issue is that this it delayed your ability to respond to emergencies the last time this happened, last year. Is that the case?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I think I think that's important.
Yeah, and those were emergencies that were that would be expected with this event or any large event in this area, no matter what it was, separate from what the topic area. You have that many amount of people, you're going to have medical emergencies. We struggled with the basic stuff. We would really struggle if something complex got thrown our way. That's the concern.
And maybe this is a question for Mr. DeHoney. Would that also create liability for the for the city if someone was experiencing, you know, a significant medical emergency and we were delayed in responding to them?
It's certainly an assertion that someone could make. If we either took too long to get to them, or we got to them but couldn't get them to a medical center for additional services, someone could say that's the city's fault. So the liability potential is there.
Councilmember Ayer.
Thank you. The one thing that I'm struggling to sort of wrap my head around is that it seems to me that the same people who attend Hash Bash are also going to this fair, that the fair itself doesn't bring in necessarily additional people. And so is it just the closure of this block? Can you help me understand how the closure of this block delayed response times last year?
So I think the the issue with the Monroe Street Fair is that it kind of extends the life of the Hash Bash to a longer period of time. And so when we and there's also the amount of people coming in that gridlock all of the major corridors like Division and State Street, and then when we when we add football traffic to that adds an additional layer. And so I understand what you're saying, and I think, you know, like we stated before, there's this is the one thing that we kind of have a little bit of control over is whether or not that's closed and whether or not traffic can flow more freely in that area. If the event were also held a little bit off-site away from downtown, it would it would free up quite a bit of vehicular traffic space. And like I said, I believe there would be more pedestrian traffic, but I think that's manageable.
Okay. It I what really bothers me about this is I feel like if we vote this down, we're punishing the fair because it's the only thing we can control, when it's really the university that's, you know, well aware of when Hash Bash occurs and is planning this Spring Game on the very same day and stressing the city resources. And I just I just really hate to do that and and potentially, you know, have it lead to some other problems that have been noted occurred before the advent of this fair as a side event to Hash Bash, which is really what it is. It's not a separate event necessarily. It is yeah, this is a really tough one for me.
Yeah, I think last year is the first time in my history here that they've held all three on all three have been held the same day where the Spring Game has been on the day of the Hash Bash. And so we thought maybe it was a one-off last year, and we have figured out very quickly that it is not. Unsure of what next year will bring. I don't know if there's any type of engagement we can do with the university. I know that they are bound by NCAA and all of the other legal guidelines, but we're happy to engage, if possible, in any way to ensure this doesn't happen again.
And just one last question. Is there any way to to sort of redeploy resources in a creative manner to I mean, is I'm sure you've given that thought, based on what happened last year?
If it was as simple, give us access and this is fine, then we would have...
Solve it.
Yeah, Chief Metzer and I have spent a lot of time over this, trying to come to terms with it, and this is not anything that we do lightly in terms of where we're at with this, so.
Yeah, our job is just to present you with with our concerns, and then you obviously make a make a decision based on those.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just for clarification, one of the things that's happened within the last couple of years, Spring Games are not uncommon across the United States, but within the last couple of years, what has happened is network television has started to program these Spring Games. So the Big Ten, of which we are a member, they slot certain games are held on certain days, and they're run on national television. So now TV is playing a role in dictating when all these happen, not just for Big Ten, but for the other leagues around the country. And so the teams are thrilled because historically, these were not televised events, but now they are. And, you know, for obvious reasons, that's a plus for recruiting, et cetera. So it just adds to the complexity of what we're dealing with.
Just for clarity, are my understanding is that you are recommending a no vote on the resolution to approve the closure, but you would be open to working with the group for alternative dates or locations? Is that correct?
Absolutely.
And I suspect I know the answer to this. I imagine you have been in communication with the university. Were you in communication prior to them selecting this date? Did we did the city express concerns? Is that something we're going to do going forward?
I couldn't speak to that.
Yeah.
I approached the university last year after the game, and that's when I became more intimately aware of the national television structure around not just this game, but any other team in the Big Ten. The SEC, the ACC, they're all doing it now.
And this is not a I think this kind of was asked before, but this is not something where if the university could deploy additional resources, it would solve the concern?
Correct. It's would be the same issue.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call oh, Councilmember Dish.
I have a question.
I just wanted to yeah, thank you. Mr. DeHoney, I just wanted to make clear that I'm hearing what you're saying, which is that you're suggesting that you may not have a whole lot of control over when this is scheduled, this game is scheduled?
That is what I'm suggesting, because if if when the networks get involved, they sort of tell you, okay, your slot's here. Now, you can elect to not do it, and they'll just put another team in there, but they're sort of lining up all these games, and they're they can't cover them all on the same day, so they spread them out.
If that is the case, then either we figure out how to deploy emergency personnel through the air, or we figure out an alternate way of enabling these events if they if it happens more than once that they can or more than twice that they do coincide. So we really need to figure out a different way of having all three happen because Hash Bash and Monroe Street Fair want to be together on the same day, right? Okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Ackman.
This is really tough, as I think, you know, you're hearing in the discussion. I want to see the Monroe Street Fair happen. It's been going on for a really long time. It's an important aspect of a festival that we're known around the world for, and it's unfortunate that we're in a situation where we have, you know, a game day event that's out of our control essentially. But I also really respect the fact that you're telling us that there's a public safety concern, and I take that seriously, too. I also feel like there's other options, and I hope that they will take advantage of those options to have it on the same day and still be part of Hash Bash, albeit at a distance, and I understand that it's not ideal. But hopefully, that's a compromise that allows it to continue and also allows us to respond to public safety.
Any further discussion?
Question. I was told I may have to speak, and my partner also may be able to ask some questions.
This is not time for this is not time for public comment. I'm sorry. This is just council.
I'm the fair organizer.
Oh.
Can I ask you a question of staff directly?
Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, if folks had questions for you and it was the body's interest, but I don't you don't have the opportunity to question staff.
You've ignored all my questions. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I've asked how we could work together, they refuse to even address our questions like they do.
I'm sorry. I can't. I'm sorry. This is not this is not time for public comment. I'm sorry. Is there any further discussion?
Is there a leader? I didn't get anything from that video.
Yeah. Mr. DeHoney.
Chiefs, what's the absolute lead time you'd need to know where the event was going to be, if it was going to be somewhere else? The essence of my question is, if there's an opportunity to find some kind of compromise that we have not yet discovered, if we took a little time to do that, can is does that cause harm in terms of your planning process?
I think for my staff, we would need about seven days to get staff in place.
Do you think it's worth?
The next meeting of this body is?
Is March 6. So I think there's some consideration about whether or not we would entertain a motion to postpone this to the March 6 meeting to provide some additional time for a potential compromise to be worked out between the city and the organizers.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Ayer. Is there a second? Councilmember Harrison, is there any discussion of the postponement to March 6? All those in favor? Any opposed? It is postponed.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now come to we now come to a series of public hearings. Public hearings are opportunities for members of the public to speak to city council about the specific subject matter of the public hearing. To speak at a public hearing, you need not to have signed up in advance, but your comments must relate to the topic of the hearing on the agenda. Speakers have three minutes to speak, so please pay close attention to the time clock. Our clerk will alert speakers when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time has expired. When your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Our first public hearing today is Public Hearing One, In Ordnance to Amend Chapter 19 Tax Exemptions for Housing Projects of Title I of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Is there anyone here who would like to speak at the first public hearing? Seeing no one, do we have anyone online who wishes to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor Proton, there's...
Mayor Proton, there's no one with their hand raised.
We will give it a second here. Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. Our second public hearing, public hearing two, is on an ordinance to amend Chapter 112, the nondiscrimination sections of 9150, 9151, 9155, and 9156 of Title IX of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Do we have anyone here who wishes to speak at this public hearing? Do we have anyone online wishing to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor Proton, I see no one with their hand raised.
Seeing no one, this public hearing is closed. We now have before you the work session minutes of the January 30th, 2023, and regular session meeting minutes of February 6th, 2023. Moved by Councilmember Ackman, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? They are approved. We now come to ordinance's second reading. B1, an ordinance to amend Chapter 19, tax exemptions for housing projects of Title I, the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Is there any discussion of this agenda? All those in favor? Any opposed? It is approved. B2, an ordinance to amend Chapter 112, nondiscrimination sections 9150, 9151, 9155, and 9156 of Title IX of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Councilmember Gazi Edwin, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Any discussion? Councilmember Gazi Edwin.
Thank you. So I would first like to thank Ann Arbor Human Rights Commissioner Kita Cohen, and also Chair of the Washtenaw County ID Task Force, for helping to lead us writing this really important change. And I'd also like to give a little bit of background about why it's so important. The state legislature in 2008 made it, they created a bunch of policies that made it difficult for individuals to obtain both federal and state IDs if they didn't already have one. And not having one means that you could not also apply for things like housing assistance, to nursing homes, open a bank account. I'm hopeful that the state legislator will be, will be working on this and changing these. But since we've been receiving reports that the Ann Arbor Human Rights Commission, that there are some retailers in Ann Arbor who are not recognizing IDs like the Washtenaw County ID. So essentially, this resolution, or I'm sorry, this ordinance would help to ban any of that discrimination from happening to any Ann Arbor resident. So retailers would have to accept any form of a government, a valid government-issued ID, and it'll be better for our community as well, because people will be able to access resources they need. So this is important. I hope you vote yes again.
Thank you. Any further discussion? For my part, I will just briefly say that I wanted to echo my thanks to the Human Rights Commission and Councilmember Gazi Edwin for working on this, particularly Commissioner Cohen for shepherding this along. I know that, I know that we have had considerable work on this over a period of several months, and they have put in a lot of work to make sure that this can move forward. And I know that also included talking to some retailers, one in particular, Meyer, in the community, who folks had expressed some concern about getting Washtenaw ID accepted. And Meyer actually responded, we reached out, trying to see if there was something we were missing, if there was something that perhaps we were unaware of that would prohibit them from taking a local government ID. And they actually responded positively that they were going to train their local employees to make sure that they were accepting it. And so I think a big piece of this is really just continuing to educate the community, and I think this is that next step. So thank you, and I also encourage support. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It is approved. Ordinance is first reading. We do not have any tonight, so we come to motions and resolutions. DC1, a resolution to appoint William Connolly and Maya Curtis as non-resident electors. Moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Ayer. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? It is approved. DC2, a resolution to commence a collaborative planning process between the University of Michigan and the City of Ann Arbor for the rehabilitation widening and non-motorized transportation enhancement of East Medical Center Drive Bridge. Moved by Councilmember Ackman, seconded by Councilmember Ayer. Discussion? Councilmember Ackman.
It's everybody's favorite bridge. So just to catch people up, we postponed this item a couple of times so that staff had time to gather information in response to questions from council, as we discussed an amended resolution that staff brought forward in January. The resolution was the result of Administrator DeHoney reopening discussions with the university so that we could collaborate on a new design that creates more space for people walking and biking in this area. In our discussion at the last meeting on this topic, I and others talked about the importance of providing a safe, comfortable experience for people that are going to be making use of both the west and the east pathways. To provide that sense of separation from the vehicle lanes, I put forth an amendment asking for barrier protection, and we postponed the vote, in part to get information regarding both the costs as well as the kinds of standards that guide the placement of such a barrier. So staff looked at two types of barriers. One was a low concrete barrier, similar to what you see on Broadway Bridge today. And the other was a more modest and less expensive handrail barrier. Because of the need to be crash-worthy, the only viable option is the concrete barrier. And due to site distance requirements, that barrier could only go on the east side of the bridge, which is the side that is today least trafficked by people walking and biking. Additionally, we learned that the cost of installing this barrier on one side next to a sidewalk of 10 and 1/2 feet, the width that we want at a minimum, will cost an estimated $1.04 million. Lastly, in terms of the standards at guide barrier placement, we learned that from a safety perspective, the barrier is not providing additional safety that is over and above the raised sidewalk and the distance from the lane. So for that reason, I want to move to amend the resolution before us by striking from the second resolved clause, the phrase "barrier protected."
Has been moved. Is there a second? Councilmember Ayer. Any discussion of the amendment? Is it friendly to the body? It is friendly. Continuing discussion with the main motion as amended. Any further discussion? Councilmember Cornell.
So I think, like a lot of my colleagues, the debate over this project, for me personally, has been an exercise in weighty pros and cons. commuter safety, necessary road repairs, the potential positive economic development to our community, significant added costs to the city's budget, the time investment made by colleagues and staff. And to be clear before I finish my remarks, I support infrastructure projects. And I know that projects like this create jobs, especially union jobs. I want to recognize the tremendous amount of staff time that has gone into this project. I respect Mr. DeHoney and the city's incredible team of professionals. I value U of M and its contributions to our local economy. From jobs creation to investment, the university is an incredible asset to our city. I want to highlight several observations, based on the information that I have received and analyzed as a result of the debates and additional information from staff. The bridge design, in my opinion, is flawed. We know that wider roads are more dangerous for everyone. We know that wider roads result in higher impact speeds when collisions do occur, and as a result, crashes are more severe. This design does not align with Ann Arbor's Vision Zero policy adopted in 2021. On our own website, the city commits to a Vision Zero goal, to eliminate fatalities and serious injuries resulting from traffic crashes by 2025. The Vision Zero plan specifically cites major streets have more lanes, more travel volume, and higher speeds. As a result, major streets like East Medical Center Drive are only 25% of the total streets in Ann Arbor, but they witness 89% of severe and fatal traffic crashes. That is significant. While we are maintaining pedestrian infrastructure with this project and are hopeful for the opportunity for an added bike path at some point, we aren't gaining non-motorized infrastructure to keep bicyclists and pedestrians safer with this design. There is no question that the bridge needs to be rehabbed, but a lot of questions around why it needs to be widened to only meaningfully accommodate more car traffic. I can join my colleagues in appreciating that the university and the city have shown a willingness to both contribute to this process. This is a project that directly benefits the university. It is my sincere hope that this shift towards working collaboratively with the city is reflective of the university's desire to be a good partner to our government and citizens, and that it will result in, long-term, better communication and connecting the goals of the universities with those of the city. Working together, we can create opportunities that benefit everyone and advance our collective shared values. I also want to thank all the people who've taken the time to reach out about this project. Noticeably, the majority of input I received was to urge me to not support this project. This feedback made me reflect on every interaction I had while campaigning, where I promised that I would prioritize infrastructure to make roads safer for everyone, and also make our citizens feel more comfortable biking or walking versus hopping in a car out of fear. I think we can all acknowledge that this project is not ideal, and at the same time, acknowledge that it won't advance our infrastructure to where we aim to be. And if we take Vision Zero into account, that's in just two short years. While I understand compromise is important and necessary in every factor of life, I cannot in good conscience compromise on this issue, when I know that it will result in a more dangerous roadway in our city. This decision was incredibly difficult, but I will not be supporting this resolution.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Ackman.
Yeah. So I want to start out also by thanking Administrator DeHoney for working with U of M to reopen this conversation. The plan that we had before added car lane while giving no additional space to cyclists and pedestrians, and that just was not acceptable. The result of these conversations with U of M is agreement from them that will gain back the space that was going to be removed on the west side of the bridge, while the east side is still being widened to at least 13 feet, and the university is paying the bulk of the additional cost. A design that will provide safe pathways for people walking, biking, and using other mobility devices through this important gateway from the north to the center of our city. I want to be clear about where we're at today. Unless we go back and accept the original design for the bridge, this project's going to cost an additional $600,000 alone in redesign costs. That was a cost I was completely ready to bear to do a rehab-only project if we could not get the additional non-motorized space. Rather than paying $600,000 in redesign costs to get zero additional space for people walking and biking, we now have the opportunity to get pathways that better support non-motorized mobility than we have today, and with the university bearing most of that additional cost. But as I said, and I think that, you know, we're hearing from other people's comments, from the public comments, this piecemeal process around the design of this bridge has been frustrating, to say the least, costing time and dollars that could have been saved had we approached this from the start with our shared carbon neutrality goals and the city's transportation policies. So I think it's critically important that as we begin projects, we have to start with Vision Zero goals, transportation policy, and the A20 policy. From the start, we need to design for the future. We have articulated as our city's vision, and that residents have been vocal in saying that they want. This is something I've begun working with staff on and plan to continue working on so that our engineering designs and plans and our public engagement centers around the values and goals of our transportation plan: safety, mobility, and accessibility for all.
Thank you. Councilmember Ayer.
Thank you. I'll be fairly brief, but I, like, I think maybe everyone else at this table, I don't know, I'm not a mind reader, but I think this is, the final design that we have here is not anybody's ideal. And, you know, for me, voting on this tonight, I'm forced, I'm forcing myself to reflect on where we were on this a year ago, which was a very different place. And, you know, and, and not just on the design of the bridge itself, but on our ability to work through some issues with U of M. I think we are in a much better place, both with the design than we were last year, but also with asserting our goals and values and holding firm to them, and coming to a compromise that, while not perfect, is, again, much closer to our stated goals than what we were faced with a year ago. This was not easy to, you know, the easy thing would have been to kind of throw up our hands and say, okay, well, you know, what happened last year happened, and we'll just move on with it. But it took, I think, you know, it took a lot of time on staff's part, particularly Mr. DeHoney. It took a lot of time on, you know, for several council members to, you know, work through these negotiations with the university. I do appreciate that the university came back to the table. I think, you know, we, they really needed to, and we made that very clear. And, and so I'd like, you know, when we think about approaching these projects in the future, I'd like this example to be remembered, that we can hold the line on our stated goals and values, and, you know, and we can have a conversation with the university, and we can come to a compromise. And I'll be voting for this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? You've spoken twice. Seeing no, oh, Councilmember Gazi Edwin.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo some of the things that Councilmember Ackman shared, that I think how, you know, this process is really pointing out how critical it is when we begin planning processes like this, to start with our Vision Zero and our comprehensive transportation plan goals. And I'm hoping, you know, after this and on an ongoing basis, we can both be better partners with the university and our shared goals, but also potentially work with MDOT on seeing what they could do around the pathway. I know that's a separate project. But yeah, I think it's important that we start off putting our goals at the forefront.
Thank you. Any further discussion? See, seeing no further discussion, roll call votes, starting with Councilmember Ayer.
Councilmember Ayer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ackman?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs absent. Councilmember Cornell?
No.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison?
Yes.
Councilmember Song absent. Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Rorina?
Yes.
Councilmember Gazi Edwin?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor absent. The motion carries.
It is approved. DC3, a resolution in support of common sense gun safety laws to reduce gun violence and gun deaths in Michigan. Moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Watson. If I may, I'm going to start us off on this one. Our resolution is already out of date tonight, because as of the start of this meeting, there have already been 81 mass shootings and 6,025 victims of gun violence in the United States since January 1st. I'm sad, I'm frustrated, and I'm angry that we are again discussing the need for meaningful action on gun, to prevent gun violence. I was in middle school in 1999 when the horror at Columbine happened. It was then the deadliest high school shooting in history. I still remember being gathered in our library that year, waiting for the all-clear when copycat threats were called into our high school just up the street. I remember hearing then that this would lead to a change in our gun laws, but the following year, politicians failed to pass even the most modest gun safety measures. I was in college in 2007 when Virginia Tech happened, and I still remember thinking how this could have been our campus, our classrooms, how it could have been us, but nothing changed. I was I was actually working in the legislature when Aurora and then Sandy Hook happened in 2012, and I still remember sitting at my desk, crying, and later thinking that at least finally something was going to change, because we couldn't possibly be the country that allows dozens of elementary school children to be massacred in their classrooms and still fail to have the courage or decency to do something about it. And still, nothing. I remember gathering in Bronpoint Court in 2016 after Pulse, knowing that the only safe havens for many queer people around the country would never feel quite as safe again, and still, nothing. I remember sitting in my hotel on a business trip in Miami, just a quick drive away, when Parkland happened. Nearly two decades after Columbine, a new deadliest high school shooting, and nothing has changed. In fact, the only major national gun laws that had changed since Columbine expanded access to guns and inexplicably shielded gun manufacturers from accountability. I remember the texts and phone calls I got after Oxford, where one of my high school friends and her husband now teach. Thankfully, she was okay, but the classroom door we kept seeing on CNN with bullet holes in it was hers. And still, the Republican majority in Lansing did nothing. So here we are again, all of us still shaken and raw after another preventable act of gun violence, this time just up the road at MSU, where all of us have people we love, especially some of our colleagues here at this table. This is not normal. This is not okay. We are not okay, and we have to do something about it. We've invested more time and energy into training an entire generation of Americans on how to survive a mass shooting than into actually preventing them from happening. We finally have a legislature and a governor who seems willing to act, but because history keeps repeating itself until the bills are signed into law, I am too afraid to hope that this time things will be different. But it must be different, and that's all this resolution says. It calls on our state government to act, and the modest protections mentioned in this resolution should be a starting point, because safe storage laws, universal background checks, extreme-risk protection orders, protection for domestic violence survivors, and a restoration of local control over firearms are a starting point, but they are not nearly enough. Michigan has only enacted 12 of the 50 most effective gun safety laws, so we have work to do, because every subsequent act of gun violence is a political decision and a policy failure, and it's unacceptable and unconscionable to fail on this. The time for meaningful action to prevent gun violence was decades ago, but we will settle for now, because now may prevent next time. We owe it to the decades, decades of victims and survivors and their loved ones. So I am begging for this time to be different. I ask for your support. Thank you. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Ackman?
Thank you. So this has been a very tough week for many of us. I don't think it's a secret that I'm a proud Spartan. MSU is not only the first place that I went after leaving home to go to college, but it's also my husband's place of work, and he also instructs a class there. So we've been quite shaken by the shooting that happened there last Monday. One thing that I've been thinking a lot about this past week is how all gun violence leaves a wake of pain and trauma behind it: the family and the friends of the victims, the community whose sense of safety is shaken; in this case, the thousands of students that spent hours on Monday night locked inside their dorm rooms and classrooms, wondering if they were next. I'm particularly shaken by this event because it's personal, but I'm also really angry that we allow ourselves to live like this, that we have allowed the public health crisis of gun violence to run rampant such that kids don't feel safe in places of learning. We know the reason for the number of shootings in this country. Numerous studies have shown its access to an astronomical number of guns. More gun ownership corresponds with more gun murders across a number of dimensions, across, among developed countries, among American states, among American towns and cities, and when controlling for crime rates. What is more, a recent analysis reveals that gun control legislation tends to reduce gun murders. So as my colleague said, it's way past time for policymakers and legislators to do something, and I'm honored to support this. I hope that Lansing is listening, and I thank Councilmember Radina, and Councilmember Harrison, and everybody that worked on this resolution. Thank you.
Councilmember Gazi Edwin?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution. Just go ahead and read it.
Do you want to read the?
Yeah. So I'd like to add an additional whereas clause after the fourth whereas clause that starts with the CDC found that the substantial increase, and so on. This additional whereas clause would read, "The communities most impacted by gun violence are disproportionately Black, Indigenous, and Latino-Hispanic, or BIPOC, communities, and yet often excluded from the policymaking process, due in part to racist gun laws." I specifically think that adding something like this is important.
Do we have a second to that? Is that, Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Ayer, is that friendly to the body? It is friendly?
Thank you.
Councilmember Gazi Edwin?
Thanks. So, you know, I specifically think that adding something more comprehensive about including the Black and other BIPOC communities, who are disproportionately affected by gun violence in the policymaking process, is important. Not only do these communities most often suffer from gun violence, but they're often excluded from the policy process in favor of stakeholders who have greater influence and power. And I think that we need to have reconciliation with communities of color as an explicit part of, of creating equitable gun reform laws and other policies.
Give me your second one.
Should I do my second one now?
Yeah.
Okay. I would also like to make a motion to add a additional resolved clause. This would read, "That the Michigan Legislature commit to adequately fund gun violence prevention and strong enforcement mechanisms without contributing to further mass incarceration while addressing the root causes of gun violence."
Is there a second? Councilmember Cornell? Is that also friendly to the body? It is friendly.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gazi Edwin?
Thank you. So I believe that when we talk about gun violence, we need to talk about trauma, the trauma of systemic poverty and systemic racism in our country. We need to talk about the lack of mental health care, the lack of social service supports, and general lack of a safety net. We need to understand how racial, the racial disparities that exist in the criminal legal system, and how there's a potential overlap between these disparities. I also want, you know, and this is, this is not comparable to what many of even my fellow colleagues have, have experienced in terms of gun violence, but in 2013, I had two gunmen get in my car and put a rifle to my face. And it was, it was very traumatic. It was, it was very painful for me for many years, but I think the most traumatic was I found out that they were later killed by police officers. And they were young. And I'm not, you know, I, I don't know what trauma probably brought them there, but I'm sure it was the trauma of so many things in our society that we don't fix and that create inequity that probably got them to that place. And so I wanted to share that story to say that, in, you know, thinking about gun reform, we don't want to exacerbate the inhumanity of our mass incarceration system, where we imprison more people than any other country in the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Watson?
Well, first, just to comment on Councilmember Gazi Edwin's amendment, and I, I just want to thank you for that amendment, but I also want to, and I also want to look to the methods that we've seen here in our community. In, in the county, there's been an initiative for, for violence interrupters that is designed to kind of forge more community connections and to help prevent gun violence before it gets to the point of incarceration. So hearing Mayor Protam Radina speak, you know, I had something prepared with the exact same touchpoints. I mean, I remember leaving an exam in 2012 and hearing about the shooting at Newtown and at Sandy Hook Elementary School, and I remember thinking that maybe this would finally shame the nation into acting classes of elementary schoolers killed. And it saddens me that another generation has to go through this, has to have this specter of mass shootings hang over their education. And my heart goes out to the students of Michigan State, the families and friends we have, and, you know, those around this table who have deep connections to East Lansing. You know, it's hard not to feel cynical, and I don't begrudge anyone who says, you know, why would now be the time? But there is a new day in Lansing. There's a new state House and state Senate, and we do have a unique chance to see results. And I just wanted to point people to the many opportunities that you have to raise your voice on gun violence in the, in the coming months. One will be a rally tomorrow at 6:00 PM on the Diag. Another will be a rally at the state Capitol, March 15th, where we'll be joined by Gabby Giffords. And then another, a day of action on, on gun violence, March 22nd. So if there's any time to get up out of your seat, if there's any time to maybe shake away the feelings of cynicism that, I don't know, sometimes it maybe even makes me feel like not wanting to get out of bed in the morning, but I think now is the time to really act and just find those places to gather, find those places to voice your support, and contact your representatives. And this is, I see my vote in support of this as my action here on council to, to voice support for common sense gun control measures, and I'm happy to support this resolution tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Cornell?
I just want to say quickly, I appreciate everyone who's taken time to share those personal stories. I agree wholeheartedly with, with everything that's been said, and just express my strong support, and if I'm able to be at this point, edit on as a sponsor, I'd like that.
Councilmember Ayer?
I tried several times to write down some thoughts on this, and the words wouldn't come, but maybe they'll come as I'm speaking now. You know, I, I speak tonight as a parent. My, my kids were in elementary, in elementary school in, in 2012 when Sandy Hook happened, and I remember that being the first mass shooting that, that hit me in a way that I, you know, felt like a ton of bricks. In 2018, there was the Stoneman Douglas. And that, in, in the intervening years, you know, my children went through high school, like, or elementary school and middle school, and into high school, like every other kid across this country, doing things that became normal but caused everyday trauma, having to go to school and do those mass shooter drills. I mean, that's traumatizing in and of itself. When, when Stoneman Douglas happened, and I saw the kids on CNN coming out and speaking so eloquently, that was when I thought, okay, this is going to change someday, and it's going to be those kids that do it. And the fact that we now have a Democratic state legislature is because of that generation, that generation that has said, I've had enough. They came out, they went to the polls, they voted in record numbers in November, and I am cautiously optimistic that it's going to lead to a change in gun safety laws in We can't keep living like this. I, I spent Monday last, last week texting constantly with my daughter as she was barricaded in her room in the dark, listening to the police scanner for hours, wondering if they were going to be next. And that is the same experience that thousands of kids had that night, and thousands of parents had that night. And enough, enough. It has to change.
Councilmember Harrison?
So I'd like to make a motion to amend the resolution. I, I don't know, Mr. Gerhart, maybe you can circulate my communication, my colleagues? But I will go ahead and read it here. And I would ask that this, just follow Councilmember Gazi Edwin's whereas clause. The whereas clause reads, "Systemic racial inequalities such as unequal access to safe housing, adequate educational opportunities, police violence, and disinvestment in infrastructure and services in BIPOC communities have resulted in concentrated and highly disproportionate gun violence in these communities."
Is there a second? Councilmember Ayer? Is that friendly to the body? It is? Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you all for supporting that, that change. I also actually have a resolved clause. Should I read it now?
Sure.
Okay. So, Mr. Gerhart, you can circulate this as well. The resolved clause reads, and this can go at the end, "That the Michigan Legislature engage with BIPOC stakeholders, including BIPOC caucuses, to address the racial inequities in housing, policing, education, transportation, and the criminal legal system," which we all, which all contribute to gun violence.
Is there a second? Councilmember Cornell? Is that friendly to the body? It is? Councilmember Harrison, you still have the floor?
So, this has been really difficult for me, and here I am again, over the weekend, trying to come up with a statement that is really re-traumatizing for me, so I just want to kind of touch on a couple of things. What I think it's really important for us all to understand is that gun violence disproportionately affects the Black community largely, and, as I'm looking for my notes here, it's very Apologize. I, really, I should, I guess, share. I think everybody might know this, but, so in 2020, and I think 2020 was mentioned in one of the whereas clauses, there were 45,222 deaths that were a result of gun violence. One of those deaths was that of my oldest son. Monday, November 2nd, 2020, the day before the general election in the state where he reside, resided, so he was not able to, to vote. He, again, was a victim of gun violence, so I really, I really tried to put some notes together for this evening, but I think I just really want to illustrate and, and sharing that with, with you all. I think you, you are aware, but some that are watching may, may not know that about I appreciate you supporting the change, and, you know, if I would, I, I would have liked to have a little bit more time, I guess, to, to, you know, provide meaningful input. But that kind of is illustrative of a bigger problem that I want to talk about, and that is that gun violence kills Black people more than anyone else in this country. Gun homicides are on the rise in the United States, with young, Black, and Brown people experiencing the highest rates. And we can see that in our county, the easternmost part of our county. And for the gun violence that has occurred here in Ann Arbor recently, that has largely been retaliatory of the violence that's happening, largely on the easternmost part of our county. We have to be intentional when we have conversations about policy solutions. We want to make sure to, to bring Black people into discussions about policy solutions around this epidemic. It's very important to me that we, we have people in the room and at the table. I mean, I've been, I've experienced, obviously, losing my oldest in a way that I don't want anyone else to experience, and I'm here at the table, but I'm just one person. So I just want to make sure that we all understand that it's very important that we have voices like mine, and individuals that look like me, sitting at the table, helping to develop policy. You know, when that death, every time we have a death due to gun violence, it represents a policy failure. a policy failure, and so we need to do better. And I could probably say a lot more, but that's all I can think of right now. This was very re-traumatizing for me, you know, over this past week, and so I just, it's really important that we bring the voices that are being affected by this most. Make sure they have seats at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other? Councilmember Dish?
I just want to be added as a co-sponsor, and I want to thank my council colleagues for all of their thoughtful words and their hard work to bring those to the table.
Councilmember Watson?
I neglected to mention that I too wanted to be added as a co-sponsor, so I'll do that now.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Oppose? It is approved. D.C., or DS 1, a resolution to approve a payment in lieu of taxes for Union, for Union at A2, 2050 Commerce Drive. Moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Is there a discussion? Councilmember Dish?
I just wanted to quickly say that this is a welcome initiative by a private developer to create affordable housing in Ann Arbor. Union at A2 would provide 250 affordable homes that would serve households with an average household income at or below 60% of the area median income. And thanks to an earlier item that we passed without discussing, which was, I think, fine that we did that, this project will be able to serve everyone from the lowest part of the, you know, the lowest AMI range up to 80%, as long as the overall income, sorry, level is 60% in the project as a whole. That's why we didn't want to discuss the previous thing, because it's tongue-tying. I am happy to, to be able to say that the Annex Group, which is developing the housing, will apply for low-income housing tax credit from the state of Michigan to finance the mortgage on the property, and that our resolution exempts the developer from property taxes in lieu of an annual service charge equal to $1 for each eligible housing unit, as long as the housing project remains affordable housing, and as long as they have a state or federally supported mortgage loan outstanding and unpaid on the project. So we, by a previous action, enabled this to be passed, and we will see an addition of 250 affordable housing units, and that is great. And it's an example of something we want to encourage more of, which is the private market to get into this work that we are doing also ourselves through the Housing Commission and our Affordable Housing Village. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Seeing not all those in favor? Any opposed? It is approved. City Attorney McDonald, do we have a closed session today?
We do not.
Thank you. We now come to the Clerk's Report. Can I have a motion to approve the Clerk's Report of Communications, Petitions, and Referrals? Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Gazi Edwin. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? It is approved. Communications from City Attorney, do we have any further communications from our city attorney, Mr.?
We do not.
Thank you. We do not have any public comment overflow today. Do we have a motion to adjourn, please? Moved by Councilmember Ayer, seconded by Councilmember Cornell. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned.